I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the March 29th Board of Education meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order just after 7:30 and we did not have executive session tonight, no items to discuss, so we can jump right to number four, which is comments in the public. Any comments regarding any item that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, here are none. I would ask for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Sounds good. And then a motion to approve the consent agenda tonight, which is item six personnel, item seven special services, and then also item eight business.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? All right, great. With that, we go to the Board of Education calendar. So I don't know if there's anything really to say on the calendar, but we have to formally vote to approve it, adopt it, so I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All right.
It's like a two week holiday.
Yeah, exactly. No one finished business tonight either, so we're gonna go to the main event at hand, which is the budget hearing today. So with that, I turn over to either Jen or Kelly.
All right, well, I would like to welcome, tonight we have our Director of Athletics, Health and Physical Education, Rob Kistagna. We have Phil Peterson, our Supervisor of Transportation. Good to see you, Phil. And Steve Thompson, our Supervisor of Operations Maintenance, and he has more in that title. There's a lot. Floor to ceiling. Tonight to share some of their thoughts about construction of their budgets and the collaboration that they've been doing with Kelly to develop those budgets. I do have to say that I am not sure in every district if the heads of these particular groups are as amenable to the micromanagement of the superintendent as the three of you are, but I just want to thank you for coming tonight, first of all, and second, to commend you for being all in by room, because the three of you truly are. Whether I'm getting a call from Phil at a quarter of six in the morning, or even sometimes five, right, with Gina, as we're figuring out snow delays, or you know, Rob, you know, talking to me about the decision-making process of athletics, which is never easy, because you have a lot of hopes and aspirations and goals of kids and parents and staff, and you manage a lot there. And Steve, it's like things come in 10 seconds. So I just want to thank you all, because you don't come and punch in and punch out, right? Like this is a full-time, 24-hour day, seven-day week job for you. And I want to also thank John Baxter who's here tonight, and he supports Steve in operations and maintenance, and has really come to learn every part of that part of our organization, which is incredibly helpful to have more than one person who knows the job. So welcome tonight, and I'm excited to hear you share. Get to it. You're up.
So we already had budget hearing one, which was on January 18th. We had the administration's proposed budget already on March 8th. Last week, we had budget hearing two. Tonight is the last time for public comment. It's our third budget hearing, and tonight we'll hear from Interscholastic Athletics, Operations Maintenance, Transportation Services, and Revenue. Next meeting on the budget will be April 15th, and then we will adopt the budget on April 19th. Budget hearing five will be the review of proposed budget, and then on May 17th, we'll have the budget vote at HCC from 6:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
All right, our administration's proposed budget for 2022-23 again is $96,939,312. That's an increase of over $1.6 million, or 1.78%. And we'll start with interscholastic athletics, which we never call it that, so it's very funny that, only this one time a year.
Technical term.
All right, Rob.
That's okay. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about interscholastic athletics and the budget that supports it. And Jen, along with what you had said earlier, I'd like to thank Kelly for always being available at every 10 seconds for a phone call if needed, and for Phil, who makes the buses appear when we need them. I still, to this day, I don't know how he does it, so thank you. And Steve and John, who were there, a text away with anything that needs to be replaced or repaired, so it is definitely a team effort. I'm very appreciative of that. So I'll jump into speaking about the proposed budget for 2022-23, and it will continue to support all of the programs that we presently have in place. The budget presently supports 21 different sports, 57 athletic teams, and 98 coaching positions. The high school participation numbers are higher than they've been in the past five years that we've been keeping track of them. This year, we have 57% of high school students participating in at least one sport. We are very proud of that number.
How much is that difference? Is it a big difference from what it was, or?
Yes, and we attribute that to, you know, we stayed the course, we managed things as best we could through difficult times, and the student athletes, they want to be out there, they want to be involved, and we're supporting that, and we're thankful, we're grateful for where we are. And along with those numbers, we have 20% of high school students participating in two sports or more. That's a significant increase. And the middle school participation numbers are steady at about 35%, and that's understandable, you know, where those numbers are. And once again, this budget for 2022-23 will provide a quality educational-based athletics program, which is what our mission is. The overall health and safety of our students is and will continue to be at the forefront of everything that we do. This budget supports our expanded intramural program, both during lunchtime and after school. This year, we offered a high school after-school intramural ice hockey program. We offered that up at the Brewster Ice Arena with our coaches and our varsity team, and we offered it to the younger students in the district. And most recently, we had field hockey intramurals that finished yesterday, and we had 41 students participate this month, 23 students in grades three through five, and we had 19 students in grades six through eight. And that was for the sport of field hockey, and the clinic, the intramural clinic was offered at the indoor bubble, and we had our varsity coach and our varsity athletes there working the intramural sessions every Monday evening this month. And I got to witness it in person, and it was fun. It was fun to watch, and it was successful. The two sports that I mentioned, ice hockey and field hockey, you know, they're struggling, they were struggling with low numbers, and to some degree still are, okay? So the goal of the intramural programs is to provide opportunities for students who may not think about trying out for that sport, because there's no program ready available to introduce them to that sport in a safe environment. So we, you may remember that we offered golf intramural programs after school. We started that about four years ago, and when we started that program, we had four high school students on the girls' golf team. We now have three times that number, and we now have a junior varsity girls' golf team, and we're proud of that. So I firmly believe in these intramural after-school clinics that we can offer, and through the budget, I continue to, I will continue to do those for various sports where we see the need, and where we believe they can help, continue to help our program. This budget also allows us to continue our mentoring program of new coaches through continual site visits and bi-weekly meetings with our coaches. We're confident that the coaches are getting the support that they need to be successful working with our student athletes. And I'm fortunate to have a team that I work with, that we, you know, we keep our notes and we keep our, the initiative moving forward for the mentoring of the coaches. And the coaches are extremely receptive to it, and they appreciate it as well. We have one new initiative that I'm really excited to talk about this evening, and one week from today, we will begin our Unified Sports Program. And Unified Sports is a partnership with the New York State Public High School Athletic Association and New York State Special Olympics. And this program brings together our high school students with and without intellectual disabilities, and provides new school-wide opportunities for athletic participation, for friendships, and also leadership opportunities. I firmly believe that this program will empower our students to just enhance the overall community, the school community, by promoting social inclusion in this area of athletics. Unified basketball was first launched in 2019 here in Section 1, and this year, we will be one of 14 teams, 14 school districts offering a high school unified sports team. And it starts, as I mentioned, a week from today, and we'll have several home games and a few away games. And we have coaches in place, we have a support staff in place. I've worked with Jill Boynton to put this, in this initiative, in our first step, and then second step. We're already at our 10th step, and we're excited for where this program can go. And as I mentioned, it's in place, and we launch it next week.
So Rob, this is in addition to varsity and JV, there's this third team that's a unified team?
Yes, it's a unified, it's a unified team, and it's a basketball program.
Just basketball?
Just basketball right now, in the spring, that we, there's, in this league, there's a total of 14 schools.
And just boys, or?
It's coed, I'm sorry. I should have mentioned that, it's coed.
That's great.
Yeah.
Is Bob Cut TV gonna advertise this as a community?
Yes, we have, we're, I'm working with Brett Alcantara and Brian Melso to do a full social media launch and to put this out there as we're ready to launch it officially a week from today.
Can the kids who are on one of the, either the varsity or JV team, participate in this as well, or?
Yes, so I was just about to get to that, so thank you, thank you for asking that. High school students can participate in the program. The only students who cannot play in the games are students who are on a basketball team in the winter. They can help volunteer to coach a team, they can help be a support for the program, but basketball players from the winter season cannot play on the court in the spring season. Other than that, everybody can participate, and they can still participate in some way, they just can't run up and down the court and play in the game.
That's great.
So with increased enrollment overall in athletics, do you think that just given the number of teams we have, like do we still have comfortable room for students to participate? Are we at the point where we start turning a lot of students away? And I guess part of that question also is whether or not, you know, the age-old question, are there other sports, you know, potentially we should be offering, or you think we're in the sweet spot right now in terms of number of offerings?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I think this year, I'm hoping, I'm hopeful to see the numbers as they, as we move forward, and what they are, for example, in the fall compared to what we have this fall, to really see if this is something that we're sustaining. Right now, the coaches have been keeping larger roster, more students on the roster than in the past, you know, once again, for reasons of, we want the students to be involved, especially, you know, we've gone through some difficult times where the students weren't able to participate. So I know some of our rosters, for example, our track and field roster this year is larger than it's been in several years, and we're excited to have that number back to where it was. So we'll see how this continues over the next several months and into next school year, and then we can better answer that question.
What about the sports that generally have very high participation but didn't this year? Like the modified boys' basketball got cut, and that's, basketball's usually a very popular...
Yeah, modified basketball, we haven't, we haven't had that particular offering, I want to say for the last four years, we haven't had that.
Because of numbers?
Well, because the students, they elect to play in an outside league, you know, and some communities have that, and that's, just right now, that's something that the students decide to take part in over the modified program.
Is there a way to create more mentorship programs from the high school down to modified? And have some of the JV and varsity players go down to HCC to really encourage student participation?
For the athletes during season or prior to the season?
I haven't thought, Rob, just thinking, we have so many multiple leadership roles in our high school, and a part of being a leader could also be encouraging younger people to get involved in athletics.
So here's what we started doing at the end of last week, meeting with the captains of certain teams, we haven't gotten through all the teams yet, and talking to them about their visits to the middle school, and how we can work with the head coach, so that we don't disrupt our practice sessions at the high school, but we're going down to the middle school to assist in a way, as we did with the field hockey clinics. And just recently, I had the conversation with the boys' lacrosse captains, and we're working out a plan so that they can provide that mentorship to the junior varsity team and to the modified team, where those teams exist. So we're, I'm working directly with the head coaches and the captains to put that in place for all of the teams.
Rob, a question that actually is also related to transportation and to facilities, really, across the board, staffing. Any coaching shortage issues? And I know in many parts of New York State, there've been transportation worker issues for bus drivers, you know, shortages. Any thoughts on coaches?
So yes, there is, it is more of a challenge to recruit coaches and officials for games. So the official shortage, I know, in the literature that I read on a regular basis, is nationwide, the decline in the officials who are taking assignments for sports. The coaches, I know, for recruiting coaches, I know that it is prevalent in Section 1, and, you know, just trying to have coaches commit to the time that we need them, for the duration of time and the number of days per week that we need them. But, you know, that was always there, I think, you know, the time, the two years that we just experienced in recent times with the pandemic, I think that didn't help the situation. So we are still in a challenging time recruiting coaches, and it's more of an effort, but we still have to carry out the task and search for the most qualified coaches that we could find.
Rob, with enrollment up to 57%, how are the coaches taking on larger teams and still putting out a competitive team on the field on a day-to-day basis, without sacrificing, taking on more kids on the team without sacrificing competitiveness?
Yeah.
And playing time and giving playing time to lesser talented players?
Yeah, so it's something that we talk, I talk about with the coaches on a regular basis. We address this, you know, as a focus point of our preseason coaches meeting, that, you know, we have to stay attentive to the students' needs, we have to be open with the students on the team to let them know the goal and the mission, and we found that the student athletes are receptive to it. I've had conversations with parents who have called my office about that, similar question, and really, we want the students involved, and wherever we can, we're trying to keep the students involved. It's not always, it's not 100% concrete possible every single time, but we've made a concerted effort, and I think it's working, and we're proud of the numbers. And, you know, certain teams, certain teams, it's easier to keep large numbers, right? And certain teams, it's more of a challenge. But, you know, trying to make that work overall, over the course of the school year, our rosters have been heavier in just about every sport.
It's a difficult, it's a difficult line to toe.
It is.
To remain competitive and also provide a service to the children.
It is, and if you, just an example, our, the boys' tennis team, we have, I think right now, we have 24 on varsity and 24 on JV, and it's constantly communicating with the athletes. I think the coaches have done a wonderful job through the tryout process and keeping the students involved, and right now, that's, right now, that's working. I hope that continues to work.
You know, just given the full rosters compared to years past, any issues with the policy that we set a few years ago about the seventh and eighth grade moving up, or is that still working in your mind, and is it good the way it is?
We had a couple of concerns that were raised, you know, at the end of last week and early this week, but it was a situation where, for example, seventh and eighth graders are on the tennis team, on the junior varsity tennis team, right? We didn't cut anybody from the team, but in this situation, the ninth and 10th graders are the starters on the team. They're playing, they're getting, they're getting the majority of the playtime, and once again, we don't want to turn away athletes, so we're, the roster's a little heavier, but the coaches want to keep the student athletes involved, so they can learn the sport and be around the program to help them grow and develop. So it's, you know, we're excited where we are right now, I think, I think we're in a very good place, and I'm excited for what we have to look forward to for next year, and I believe the budget will support everything that we're looking, looking to do.
Thank you. Any other questions for Rob?
What's the increase?
1.16.
1.6. What's that prop?
Well, you get ticketed down.
So 1.5% salary.
Yeah.
Majority is salaries. We have to remember, Steve, talk a little about operations and maintenance of our facilities.
I'm hoping you guys are questioning out on Rob. I hardly even asked the question. I'm gonna start with the 1620 codes, which is the operation plan, so there is a total increase of 3.0%. So some of the things that drove that increase are, obviously, I think we all know, the oil increase, our increase is huge. We have dual fuel, so we try to burn oil to get more BTUs when it's really, really cold, like 10 degrees and lower, otherwise we stick to natural gas, so we have that opportunity at each school. Natural gas increase is 4.11%, and a lot of that is due to conhead with their increases on delivery and production rates. Electric increase is 2.14%, so the electric is due to, we have done recently, in the last three years, air conditioning at all the schools, we're not done, totally done yet 100%, and also, we have changed out a lot of rooftop units, motors and things like that, so it's totally increasing the usage of electric. We do a lot of LED lighting and things like that that help keep it, LED lighting's better than having, or, you know, what the regular light bulbs have, so fluorescents. The BOSI Safe School, I'm gonna let Kelly just chip in there, and then I'll explain what the code series with BOSI's.
That's the big one.
Yeah, so that looks really good. So what that was, what that was last year, if you recall, we changed, we pulled security out of Steve's budget and created a new budget code.
Yeah.
And when we did that, we removed the safety and risk, is that what?
Yeah.
BOSI's code, that's for safety and risks, is for inspections and...
For asbestos inspections, LE, lead in, lead water inspections.
Right, so inspections we have to do every year, we pulled that out of Steve's budget code, we put in a security. It's more appropriate in his code, because it's building code, so it's just a budget correction, there's no additional increase in terms of dollars. If you looked in the security code, you'd see that decrease, so that's why it's kind of strange, with such a large increase. Okay.
So it's off the...
Yeah, so the code is a $20,500, that's the actual code.
Yeah, and so BOSI's closer, so we do a lot of things off of the BOSI's closer, we get opportunities, but some of the saving money with, and just servicing out some of the options that they have, we go up there, so we save money through BOSI.
So it's just a shift of code.
So how's, you've got a 2.3% increase, a 25% increase, a 3% increase, the 269.7% increase, how is that totaling to a 3%?
Because the 269.7% doesn't exist.
It's, you know, and the salaries are so big.
So it's this, it's a 3% increase, 490 divided by the 3%. Yeah, you can't add the percent, you gotta add the total.
Oh, okay.
Because the salaries are so much proportionally bigger, that's what I mean. Oh, okay. Yeah, the majority of the increase is related to that.
And the equipment was for the air and gas?
Yeah, that, yeah, so I'm gonna get into the equipment on the 1621, because we, I'll
explain what's going on.
You're talking about equipment for this slide? Yeah, no, this is just related to cleaning, so this is related to...
Cleaning products, not cleaning products, but cleaning equipment, so such as like, we buy like Zambonis, they're called chariots, things like that, repairs, all that kind of equipment. That's not actually lawn equipment, that's under 1621.
So it's a floor cleaner.
Have you been able to pretty much get what you need at this point, or are there still significant changes?
So, no, and that's what I was gonna explain, under some of the stuff moving forward, under the 1621. Right now, like I've gotten a call in the last couple of weeks with all the stuff that we need for the summertime, but simple stuff, just like floor finishes, may not be able to get, I have to like order that now, because I've been told that we may not be able to get it.
Even by the summer?
Yes. So I'm running into all those issues, I'm running into equipment issues. We ordered two rooftop units for HCC last week, we're being told that it's 39 weeks out before we get them. I was planning on it, yet doing it this summer. So a lot of the stuff we're gonna talk about that's gonna be done this summer, a lot of it's dictating whether we can get the equipment or not.
Right.
We've also had a van that has been ordered, I'm actually not even mentioning this budget before, it's almost two years ago, I've not received yet. We have been told in the words out there that Amazon, when they went on their own deliveries, they bought all the vans, and we can't get, we can't get vans. So recently, we did get a call from Dodge and said that we should have our van within the next, I think, a couple of months, I was told, so. There was also a truck on order that I, we had a pickup truck on order, and we got a letter about a month and a half ago from Dodge on the state contract that they cannot, they can't get us a truck, so we canceled the order. Now they're saying, if we order it this spring sometime, things may get a little better. So that's just an example, but everything that we're doing right now is, the lead times are just out there, like they, I've never heard, like it's just crazy. So it's hard to, you know, it's even budgeting right now with all this stuff, it's very, it's very difficult to budget, because you really, the costs have gone up on just everything, and even when we put out bids, they can't hold on to bids, like with those rooftop units that we ordered, I have a, I have a price from them, and they're on a contract, but they can't hold to that price by the time it comes in, 39 weeks from now, maybe $3,000 more than what I ordered before, they can't hold on to it.
Wow, so even if you order it, they sometimes can't even hold on to it.
Yeah, exactly, so that's, it's, so it's been very, very difficult, so we're trying, you know, it was like before COVID too, when COVID hit, we were able from a lot of our suppliers and vendors, help us out and get what we needed, all our chemicals and things like that, that we needed, and they helped us out. So we're relying on a lot of that right now to help us out in getting products we need for this summer. So a lot of that's up in the air, there's, you know, we're supposed to be doing a water system, a new water system at the high school mandated by the county, and we're waiting for the county to approve the final drawings. I've been calling there the last few days, because if the drawings aren't approved soon, we're not, there's like 12 tanks going down in the boiler room for this water system. we're not, there's like 12 tanks going down in the boiler room for this water system and pump. I'm not gonna be able to get the stuff in for the summer. And they wanted it to happen this summer, but they're not.
Yeah, this was a project that they told us we had to do.
We had to do.
And they gave us a year reprieve on it to get it done. So now we're into next year. But now we're at the point where it hasn't been approved by them. By the time we get approval, we're not gonna be getting those 12.
Can you put in the order before you get approval?
Yes.
Can you put in the order before you get approval and cancel it if you don't?
For the...
For the tanks?
Me either, gonna talk about mine.
Yeah, it all goes on the design. It's their final design. So what happened was, we were supposed to do a chlorination system. About eight years, eight years ago, we had a chlorination system and they mandated that we do a ultraviolet system, which we did. They're making us take that out now and go back to a chlorination system. But it's with about eight holding tanks. And then now that the PFAS came up, that new law with the PFAS, we're trying to, that's not, hasn't been approved yet. But we wanted to do that this summer with this project.
Makes sense to you.
So we don't have to do it next summer.
Restart it again, that's all right.
So it sort of changed a lot of the plans during the PFAS. So what's, what's happening is until that's approved, I really can't order the tanks and motors because I have no idea what they're gonna be.
And the design can change based on that mandate. So we're in a tough spot here.
So those are all the kind of samples of things that we're having a lot of difficulties with. But we're, you know, we'll, we'll get there. And you know, service contracts, so on the 1621 codes, maintenance service has gone up because all our services that we hire out, everything just going up. We're actually getting charged now for administration fees. We're getting charged for, you know, gas, for their travel. So there's a lot of different things going on. And that's, you know, so the increase is, like I said, I don't even know if the budget is gonna hold. It will hold to what we have because we'll watch what we, what we get and what we don't get. But the pricing is just insane right now. It truly is. Building repair and equipment, 476, there was an increase of 16.67. So again, that's the cost of all the motors that we purchase, everything that we purchased for repairs, equipment, everything in the schools, boilers. There's so much stuff that we order that way. And we, we search and John does a lot. He helps me really out searching, calling different companies. And it's, it's the same anybody you call right now. So, so there's a lot of issues there. But like I said, we'll, we'll get there.
And we do bids every year for electrical units. We're doing that process right now. So we're kind of interested to see that it's gonna come back. Obviously, we anticipate increases there, so it's gonna be a very experienced.
Yes. Yeah, so, you know, and it's just started happening. A lot, you know, we knew the last few months, like going to buy a car, we knew with the truck. But I never thought that stuff that we were gonna do this summer has hit that bad that we... When I heard that 39 weeks last week, I was like, you gotta be kidding me. Like that's...
Yeah, it's higher supply chain.
Right. And then what that, then that puts us into a situation when we get that kind of a timeframe. Then we have to plan on when we were gonna do your job because the kids are back in school when we receive the...
Yeah, we can't put a crane there. It starts in September, we have to get it done before September.
Is there anything at this point that's either health and safety related or mission critical that you're concerned about from like a timeframe perspective? Or do you think that, stuff that falls into those two categories, we're, we're in good shape on?
I think, I think we're okay. I do. The only thing I'm concerned about is, is the water system, not because anything with the water. It's the county mandated us to do as they gave us a year. And we'll talk to the county. I've been trying to get them a list of dates because I don't want to have them fine us in any way for something after we're playing a waiting game. So that's what I'm concerned about.
There must be a way to get an extension, I'm sure.
Yeah, like myself, another year extension. But, oh, and the only time we can do it is the summer. I mean, we can't shut off the water.
So if it's not done this summer, it does have to be a year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that will be an issue if we don't explain the case, but it's, it's still up in the air.
And as long as it's not a safety issue.
No.
Yeah, there's no issue with our water, water's fine. It's just a different treating system.
Yeah. And we test the water, the water at the high school is tested every day because we're well watered here. We're not cow watered. So it's tested every day.
Wow.
So, and the water's fine here. They're just making us change it back to a chlorination system.
When you mentioned those rooftop units, you were talking about air conditioning units?
They are AC and heating units.
And those have to be, those are new or being replaced?
They're being replaced. They're, they're new. We're taking off the old ones.
They're split system units.
Those are more rooftops.
Splits.
I know, you're getting, you're getting NOAC pretty good.
Are all the buildings separate?
Not totally. We still got the rest of the 200s and music rooms at the high school and a couple of other rooms. And a couple isolated areas and that's it. And we are...
Are we expected to have that done this...
That's supposed to be, everything has been ordered.
Delivery materials.
It's all depending on the delivery materials. That, that stuff was ordered about two, two months ago, two and a half months ago. So we're hoping that we get that in time.
Is that something that could, is that work that can be done when the kids are in school? Or that also has to be done?
Um, some of it can up on the roof. The problem is, is when we talk rooftop units, is I have to have cranes in to lift everything. So I can't have a crane win schools and stuff. And a crane is anywhere from $12,000 to $14,000 a day. That's how much you pay for a crane to lift your unit. So when you're paying that kind of money, you want to try to have as many units as you can to lift on the roof in one day.
Yeah, sure. Yes.
Yeah.
Weird, great.
So there's a lot that goes to it.
Your, your own house, we're waiting for you to break down.
For sure.
It's just like, we were able to, we just replaced the new boilers at the high school, which you guys knew. And we were able to, the vendor that we used was able to get those. They're Fulton boilers. They're made in Fulton, New York. And we were able to get them because I said it was an emergency. And they were able to say it was an emergency and pull them off of, off of the production line. We weren't supposed to get those, but they were able to do that for us. So that's what I said, when vendors, some vendors and people that we use, they help us out because of the relationships that we have for many years. So hopefully, it all works out for everything that we need this summer. And I'll be giving Kelly and Jen updates as we go along with... So I wanted to jump to the cap plant. So up at Coleman Hill, what was planned was continued sealing and LED lighting replacements. We've been doing that at all the schools for the last probably five years now.
They're great.
We're trying to...
Yeah, we noticed the difference, really. Top of difference.
Yeah, we're trying to just phase it in slow each year until the buildings are, are complete. And we do a lot of that in-house. The lights are in-house. So I think stuff like that, like LED lighting, I don't think that's an issue with, with lead times.
We haven't been having it though.
Yeah, so stuff like that, we'll be able to do seal and tile, great work. That, that's not an issue. We're doing the same thing at Wampus, the same type of work. And we're gonna be replacing a, the hallway around the library, taking that tile up, putting the tile down. That's being done this summer. There's no issues with that. There's plenty of floor tile. HCC, we're installing new lights in the large gym. I believe we have those on order. There shouldn't be an issue with them. Installation of new bleachers in the gym. I have to do a letter of intent soon to get that going. We really not supposed to order until the budget. It's passed, but a lot of things to move forward and see if we can get it done this summer. I might, I have to do like letter of intent and the companies will take that from us because we've been doing business with them for many years, so. Install a new boiler at HCC. So again, we did two Fulton boilers here. We're gonna do the same thing down there this summer. And I don't see a problem with that. Byram Hills High School, so I mentioned the water system that's in here. And then we are planning on widening in the parking lot towards the football field. So there's more space between the cars. And then a new walkway going down alongside the bleachers to the school. And up top by the tennis courts, doing, recapping that parking lot and doing cement curbing up there. Because blacktop curbing doesn't work because when you plow, blacktop curbing just gets eaten up by the plows and it just doesn't last. So we're planning on doing that. Blacktop also, the price of blacktop right now is through the roof. Trucking through everything is like...
Which way? How are you gonna widen it?
Gonna go towards the, towards the football, synthetic turf, towards the bleachers.
The other side.
Can't go towards the tenant side because that's where all our fiber optic lines run up to the administration building. So like, I don't, and there's a hill there, so we don't want to play too much with that. And then a new sidewalk there. And then that will complete the entire parking lot because we did the roadway coming down and the circles last summer. So the high school will be complete. Following year, I think we're gonna look into doing Coleman Hill and just each school at a time, so.
Getting those minivans in and out of that parking spot is fun.
Yes, it's tight, no, it's tight.
I don't know how the high school kids do this.
How about the high school seniors that...
I know, that's what I mean. I had a few years' experience.
Yeah, so that's...
They have to call the kids off and to come and move their cars slowly into the parking spot. Because they're about it.
Can't even imagine.
Yeah.
So we were gonna widen it, but the thing is, I'm looking at that middle island. I don't know if everybody knows the middle island, letting cars park. Wanted to get rid of that. But the problem is, if we get rid of that, then some bumpers are probably gonna hit. And I don't want to put in those, what do they call those cement?
Got garden ground?
Those bump, real nice.
Yeah, those things they have in, like the parking lots, the cement, and they have them spiked down into the concrete. And you can't, you can't, I don't want to put those in because it's, it's a nightmare when your plow went snow. So I'm thinking about possibly keeping the island, moving it, obviously, moving it all when we widen, but keeping that so the cars are separated. And I think that's, I think that's it. I think we hit everything.
Yeah, your work cut out for you this year.
Yeah, everything's, Steve's the busiest summer person.
Significantly more expensive and significantly harder to procure.
Yeah, the budget, it's unknown, you know, so the budget didn't kind of...
But your relationships with the vendors now? Yes.
Steve's relationship with our vendors is how we got through COVID, was cleaning supplies and garbage bags.
It's a testament to you.
He called them up and he said, oh, the district couldn't get them, we got them because of that.
They were calling Kelly to ask if they can purchase off of us.
That's true.
Three times the price. That's right.
Do you have masks?
It is not so hot.
Yeah, right?
So yeah, I just want, I just want to say something too. I just want to thank everybody like Rob said before. Because without everybody in this room, our jobs, we wouldn't be able to do our jobs. So the understanding and the positivity that goes on in this district is amazing. So it's because of everybody here. So I just thank you.
Well, we appreciate your work.
We appreciate you so much.
It's so important and so essential and through COVID made a huge difference and it'll continue to.
And I think every family understands, like we all understand what you, the hardships you're dealing with with this because we're, we're in like a little microcosm of it, right?
Yes.
Within our household, so.
Exactly, yes.
Forget it.
Thank you.
I'm gonna order a washer and dryer this week.
Oh, gosh, forget it. Because you might need one in two years. Get a floor mop.
In three months.
It's so true. Ask Steve to call, he's not...
Steve, right, your vendors sell mowers?
The cord thing isn't working for us and the trouble.
I'm joking.
Somehow I think that's unethical, okay.
Yeah, just for the record.
I'm not know.
Transportation.
Phil, talk about transportation.
Well, I want to reiterate what Steve was saying. If it weren't for Jen, Gina and Kelly, boy, I tell you, phone calls, it doesn't matter. And I've never seen more, the three people more busy than these people. Gina calls me on her way home and I'll call in the morning, she waits, you know. I'm not really urgent, so, but it's, and I hate bothering them, but really helped me along the way. So I want to thank you guys for being there for me. I started here, Byram Hills, in 1998, which I was a bus driver, number 18 on the list. Now we're up to 68. And it's come a long way, a lot of changes. And it's been, it's been one wild ride for that.
I didn't realize that.
But, so right now, currently, we have 82 transportation vehicles. We have 40 vans, 29 large buses, minivans and cars for the ones and twosies, which help on, save on gas and maintenance. We have 10 of those vehicles, three garage vehicles, including a machine that helps us with the snow. And, and because now we're fenced in, we have to get rid of that snow and so we can snow blow it right over the top of the fence, which is nice. But, and then our garage is responsible for those vehicles, plus 16 of, you know, builders grounds maintenance. So our mechanics are very busy, needless to say. We have four great guys in there that do a good job. Our buses travel approximately 4,8,742 miles annually. And for a district that's only 17 square miles, you'd say, wow. But keep in mind, we do a lot of private schools and probably more private schools buses than we, we run private school buses more than we run our in-district buses. So that number is increasing, whether it be through special ed that springs up. We've had, in the last four months, we've had about five special ed schools that popped up that we had to, we had to get them there. And it's been, it's been very tough. We've been dealing with this bus driver shortage, which is very difficult to navigate throughout the, like you said, state, even nationally. Been on webinars and whatnot for Midwest and they're really hurting out in the Midwest. New York State has sent letters out to retired bus drivers saying, please come back. And we haven't, I've called people, a few people that retired to see if they want to come back and just help us out with afternoon with athletics and, you know, no dice, they like the retirement. It doesn't quite work that way. But Rob has been great at, you know, going to Rob and say, Rob, listen, what can we hold off? What can we push back a little bit? Athletics have been great making this happen. And as much as he gives me kudos, I give him kudos too because it's not an easy thing to negotiate and to navigate, rather.
Or negotiate.
Yeah.
Sounds like your teams are going to one location.
We have an outstanding staff, willing to jump in and do anything it takes without grumbling. You know, they'll come in and, you know, I say, I need you to, like today, Rob and I worked out some details and then, well, Monkey Ranch, we have to, we have to change schools, which means this time has to remain the same because they don't have lights to play. So, so I get my staff to do this and then I changed it. And then in this one, we had to change that. So we had three major changes today in athletics, just to pull off the afternoon. On top of our bus driver shortage, I've got a poor guy out with cancer. And we've got two hip, three hip replacements. And not to mention, you know, a death, and so the person's out for bereavement. So it's been, on top of being short drivers, you know, we have to deal with navigating around all that too. So our drivers have been, been coming in and doing very, very well and really just understand the concept of being team players. So I, you know, I thank them all the time for what they do.
Phil, what do you do when there's somebody out? Like if there's a teacher out, we get a substitute. What do you do when there's a bus driver?
Well, amongst our, amongst our staff, we have spare drivers, like substitute drivers. I was one for probably about six years. And sometimes, you know, you got a little break, you're on standby and, you know, it's kind of boring. Give me a broom, I'll sweep the shop, give me something to do. I don't want to just sit here, call me if you need me. Not so much. They've been, they've been going and doing this person at this time and then jumping, switching to another bus and doing this person's run. It's, it's been...
They know all the runs.
What's that?
They know all the runs.
And they know all the runs. There is, oh, gosh, there's, there's a lot. And getting confused with the high school, okay, this high school route goes along this road, but I stop here, here and here. But the Wampus run, it goes along that road, but we don't stop there, we stop over here, here and here. So sometimes there'll be, you know, it gets confusing, but, you know, they do a good job. And like I said, I can't say enough about them. They really are aces, all of them.
I gotta say, even in the office, they're so nice. I mean, you guys are so busy and then you've got like me calling and saying, did my kid leave his water bottle on the bus? They're so nice about it, you know, it's...
You know, we're, we're human too. We've all had, well, except for John, you know. We've got kids too. We know what it's like. And John, being so young, has really adapted into the dispatching. And he credits his, his relations to parents because he worked in customer service at Macy's. So he comes along and, you know, he's, he sees how we do things and he picks up on it and he knows what to do. Still teaching him a lot of, and mentoring him in as far as operations and how to, you know, how to handle tough situations and tough customers, I should say. But...
Oh, we don't have any of those.
What's that?
We don't have any of those in Byram Hills.
But, no, just a complicated, like what do I do about getting this one that has to be here? And so, but he's, navigationally, he's, he's well, he knows his surroundings. He knows all these stops and he's, he works with the drivers one-on-one to make sure. And our, our motto is, we're gonna make our drivers successful. It doesn't pay to have, you know, if we have a weak link, we're gonna strengthen that weak link. It doesn't pay to have, you know, if we have a weak link, we're going to strengthen that weak link, weak link the best we can. And, and it's just, he's, he's very crucial at that. And I, I do not speak Spanish unfortunately, and he does. So that's very crucial to some of our Spanish speaking drivers who have not overcome the language barriers that they, they face. So he's been instrumental in that. So.
How's, how's ridership pre-COVID to now?
Pre-COVID to now, we have more on the buses now than we did before. Last year I did a weekly study and I watched it go up and down, up, but mostly up and down as it's going down. So this year, right off the bat, we saw an increase in numbers and, which was very good. I hope you guys up at Coleman saw the.
Yeah, we're off duty now.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
We're arrival and dismissal.
Are you? Because more people are taking the bus.
And also because they really have pre-existed.
Yeah. So it's been, it's been more steadily increasing. I noticed, I'm out of traffic at the middle school and I noticed the traffic at the middle school. Usually by the time we dismiss the buses, I got a line of traffic still waiting to get into the school and I have to hold them up. By now, we're, we're just about done before the bus is dismissed. So that means there's less traffic coming in. Or they're getting there really early, one or the other. So.
Or they're in athletics.
What's that?
Right. They're in athletics, saves the after couple of months.
But as far as our, our increases, well, we have our salaries, which is contractual anyway. Our equipment for vehicles such as snowplows, two-way radios, cameras, et cetera. Those pretty much have, you know, stayed the same. So we didn't have anything along there. Contractual services. Our medical exams, each driver is subject to an annual medical exam that the employer pays for. Drug testing is federally mandated now. So we have our drug testing part of that. Body shop, not for, you know, if there's an accident, obviously insurance pays all that. But some of our, our buses that are beyond repair in the garage, we send that out to have that done at body shop. Our lifts, our overhead doors, those kinds of maintenance things fall under that. So we did increase that. That line due to just the cost of everything is just going up. So, you know, both these services, we've just steadily been decreasing that, that line. Materials and supplies. Yeah, that's, that's going to be our gasoline and our diesel, which, we just found out we were paying 310 on Friday for diesel. We're up to 375 for diesel now. And that's on a state bid. And so that's a, that's a crucial. Our lubricants for our buses or oils, that's all, you know, up, going up and up and up. So there's other fluids in there. Our tires are in there. Tire budget, I don't know anything about making tires, but the, that's, tires are going up just as much as the oil. As I imagine this kind of oil process.
All related to crude oil.
Yeah, it's all related to that. So, so, and bus parts. Our, our bus parts are in that, in that line as well. Supply and demand, everything's going up. Exhaust pipe about five feet long, you know, twisted exhaust pipe, you know, $495 for a four-foot section just because it's molded to fit that vehicle and that's up. And so our, our price and parts are, are going up because, and our availability is not all there either. We used to stock a lot of parts to have them on hand. It's not worth it because you, well, one, you can't get more than one maybe now. And two, to lay all that money out now when we just, you know, we have the buses, extra buses to wait a day or two for it to come from the factory that way. So.
But smiles are free. We get those a lot on the bus, right?
What's that?
Smiles are free.
Smiles are free, yes. Yeah, well, that is absolutely.
The buses are filled with those.
Yeah. So under the garage building equipment, like our tool vendors, our AC machines, shop equipment, things like that, pretty much has been staying the same. The contractual services, uniforms, our shop rags, different kinds of soaps that we use, sand soaps. And we now have our bus wash things, bus washing soaps, although I think, does that come from you? That comes, yeah, that comes from you.
Sure.
Just trying to think of all the different soaps.
Steve's budget.
But, and that has proved out to be really helpful. Our buses look great when they go down the road and they, it doesn't take some of the rust away from the older babies, but it does, it does clean them up. It makes them look nice when they show up at a sports activity.
Probably get a little more life out of the under.
Yeah, and you get a lot more life. We have an under spray that, you know, with the hose, you couldn't get all that off at the hose. So. And every six months, our buses go for DOT, be up on the lift, and that's when the guys would take the power washer and do it. But now every, you know, bus gets washed like every other week, depending on how we get through the weather. It gets cleaned off underneath and it does last a lot, a lot longer. So we should be having less rust on our buses. So. And then we also have materials and supplies. Staples is in there for our, our software for our, our transporting system, Transfinders in there, our WB Mason and things like that. So that's all pretty much stayed the same. Contractual and others stayed the same. Our weather apps, that's just, and things like that for the contractual. Vehicles, vehicles is a big deal. We have put out for what we were supposed to get last year. They just up and canceled the order for two of our buses because they just stopped making them. So again, we have a good, a good rapport with the sales, ramp sales, bus sales. And they were able to find us two that just came off to, they acquired two that came off and they said, you guys want them, you got them. So we will be getting, not exactly what we ordered, but we will eventually get them. So that, that will be, that, that order will be fulfilled, but not before they cancel it first. So. But there, you're looking at an easy 10% increase in just buses alone. And that could, that could rise even more than that depending on availabilities. Because again, the GM is not even making the chassis for it, for some of the vans. And the big buses are taking longer and longer to order because of the COVID slowdown. So that has been, that is going to be an increase right there. So any other questions about, I think somebody had questions about electric buses? Okay.
We might want to see data.
Yes, we will.
So Governor Hokel, in her state of the state, talked about having every bus purchased after 2027, had to be zero emission. And then all buses have to be by 2035. So that, that was just her idea, her goal, I guess. I think the Senate pushed that back a couple of years. I think we pushed it to 2029. And then Assembly said they wanted to have the Commissioner of Education do a study on it and then come up with feasibility of every district doing it. So it's not set in stone at this point. But what do you want to talk about just kind of the challenges with electric buses?
Yeah, this Green Power Motor Company came up with, they call it the beast. And they've been circulating this around to different schools and transportation departments in the county. This was up at Fox Lane High School about three, four weeks ago. And this is what they're offering. It's about a little over, well, a lot over a half a million dollars. And this one happens to be huge. And if you look at the seating capacity, 91 kids. And I can easily take 91 kids and eat up three runs, but it'll take me about an hour and a half to.
That's not conducive partners.
So.
What are our buses now helpful?
Our buses hold 75, 72 to 75, depending on the age of the bus.
Physically longer?
It's a little bit longer, but it's how they, their, the seats are really cramped. They're, you're, to put your high school kids on there, they're, they're really adults, right? I mean, so it doesn't really, this bus wasn't one of my.
It's going to be really great with a turning radius of 41.3 feet.
This is what they're talking about in New York City. I don't know how that's, like making those turns.
And this is just one example of what's going out there. There's tons of other electric, electric buses out there. Kelly was mentioning, it's, they want zero emissions by 2027 for, for buses. Right now, Barm Hills is running zero emissions right now due to two facts, low, ultra-low sulfur, which is in the diesel fuel. So that ultra-low sulfur is cutting back. And all buses, diesel buses now, are equipped with DEF, which is a diesel exhaust fluid, which I kid you not, is made up of cow yarn. So there's something in the, some byproduct in cow yarn that they, what it does, it injects it into a chamber in the exhaust. And as the emissions from the exhaust enter that chamber, this fluid ignites the particles and burns them up inside this chamber. It's called a regeneration and outcome very clean. There are mornings when we had the old buses that I remember, on a cold morning, you know how a fog would hang low? We'd start up some of these diesel buses. I couldn't see the other end of the parking lot because the smoke would just hang. And the poor neighbors in Whipple, they would get all that smoke just coming over there in the morning. And it's horrible. Right now, you start a bus up and you don't see anything. You know, you look behind the old city buses, you get that black smoke coming up. We don't have that at all.
So we might have to close the field ATC and get cows, right?
Yeah, so we have to get our cows, that's it.
I don't, I don't know if cow, I don't know if cow yarn is going up in price, but. Crazy price of cow yarn.
And those diesel tanks are not flammable in the Atlanta worship.
Yes, yes.
You know that.
Right.
So these are.
With the gas tank.
Yeah, one thing about the electric bus I'm not too sure about is the batteries and how to handle the, you know, the types of, everybody's coming out with their own system of batteries. Some are lithium, some are this, some, you know, and how do you dispose of that at the time? And so there, there, some people say, oh, we have that under control. Some of the companies are, are still researching that, the best way to, to do that. And electric buses are, it all depends on, like you say.
They don't even say what the batteries are.
What's that? Yeah, this, this doesn't tell you what it is.
So these are about 500?
A little over 500,000.
And our car buses are about two, right?
What's that?
Our car buses are about two?
Our buses are right now are 164,000.
What do they propose to do with those buses? What happens with the old buses?
Well, once they go, like I read an article for New York State, you know, they have their, their pickup, their dump trucks that they have. Anything that is not zero emissions, they take a torch and they literally cut the bus, the truck in half so it can never be driven again. So it's like when they did that, the clunker, the clunker laws a few years ago.
It's wasteful. It's such a waste.
Yeah, it's such a waste.
For us, though, there's a time between 2027 and 2035 that some, like in that or 10-year period of time, that whenever you need to buy a new bus in that 10-year period of time, it has to be electric. So it's only the replacement. So you can still, if it starts in 2027 and we buy a whole new fleet in 2026, which we wouldn't do, but.
It's a slow, like a slow stream.
You wouldn't have to replace it until.
So it's not a law.
Right. Yeah, it's not a law.
And it's not a law yet.
No, there's, there's no districts in this area that, there's one district that's buying electric buses and they had one in the prior year.
Well, like I say, also the service that would have to go into transportation, electric service, we probably have to do a whole new upgrade.
Yeah, every bus is a charging station.
Yeah.
And then fixing and mechanics.
Yeah, your charging station is going to be about 150,000 right there. So add that to the cost of each bus.
Then we have to cut the parking lot.
I don't know.
But let's not jump off, there's nothing, there's no wall.
We need, we need to feel.
We need to feel, Roger.
But electric buses, what they do also is the drain. So Midwest, upstate where, you know, where there's no mountains, hills and stuff like that, you know, it's like anything you use more power on, your battery is going to go quicker. So around here, if we going, because we have a lot of hills, we climb, climb, just climbing up here to the high school, it's going to take more power than it did if the road was, was flat. So like any other electric motor, it's going to, it's going to eat up more juice, you know, and then, you know, rain, everything's electric powered. So, you know, you can, Seattle where it's raining like 100 and, you know, or sunny, what, 50 days a year and the rest is all rain, you're going to be using your wipers more. So that's going to delete your power. So there's a lot of pros and cons about it, but.
What was the maximum capacity of our curt buses?
What's that?
Maximum capacity of our curt buses?
Seventy-five.
How often do we actually use 75 seats?
When we do our CCD trips and our, our tempo trips.
Small percentage of the school year.
Yeah, it's all, yeah, all depends.
Yeah.
We use them a lot now.
And the fact remains that although our buses are not full, we have to be able to fill them and deliver kids in the event of an emergency. That's a law.
Right.
So even if the kids aren't using it, you can't say, well, let's put a minibus on that route that is willing to help our kids. Kids who actually live on that route are the kids we have to account for in the bus.
Right.
Even though they're not using it.
So it's, yeah, it's not as easy as saying, oh, you know, if I can put a van in there, I will. Like today, we had a, you know, I was out driving today actually, and I did the Wampus activities. Well, that was a very small saw. I took a van. So I was able to take a van because they fit in a van rather than taking a big bus. So certain things like that, we can, you know, we always play with, you know, I can get away with, it's cheaper to send a van. It's easier for the driver to send a van if we can get away with it. I often call analysts and say, give me exact numbers. So if I don't have to take a bus, you know, up to, you know, out to Suffolk or someplace, I can take a van. Great. And, you know, sometimes the coaches would like a big bus to stretch out, but if we can fit their equipment and the students in a, in a smaller vehicle, we'll do that.
So we've spent a lot of time over the last, Jen has too, over the last couple of months with probably every legislator in, certainly in the county, but even broader in our Florence Valley. And a couple of the major problems, which we'll see if they solve between now and April 1st, when the budget passes, is, I guess there's a mechanism for funding that the state has that can subsidize some of, some of this transition because it's ridiculously expensive.
But not for us.
But not for us right now because we have our own buses in-house and it's only, the only entities that are eligible are the transportation companies. So, so they're, so we, we're trying to get that fixed so at least we can partake in that similarly. And then the second thing is to make sure that there's some protection against price fixing in this market because it's a small market for electric buses. And if the entire state is forced to buy, we just want to make sure that we're not, you know, taken advantage of with taxpayer money. So those are the two points. I mean, the good thing is that with every year that goes by, the technology is going to get better, the range will get better, the battery life will be longer, right? These things will come down in pricing. You're just going to go out on the cost curve. So there's a lot of things heading in the right direction, but there's some major problems with the legislation right now. So hopefully they'll, they'll fix it before it goes through.
I think they'll pivot more to the zero emission in the meantime until the technology kind of catches up and districts catch up. So I'm hoping at least that's the case. They'll extend it, you know, farther down from 2027, maybe it gets down to 2030 or something like that.
Is that common? Are a lot of districts on zero emissions right now or is ours sort of unusual in that sense?
I'm not sure about that.
We're, now pretty, pretty much most of our, for New York State, New York State emissions and California, you know how strict California is, New York's right there with them. And so we're, that's why we're able to be zero emissions with this. Like I say, a bus doesn't come to New York, you know, you just can't, they're made in South Carolina or North Carolina, I forget which one it is. And, but they just can't take any bus. They have to make it specifically for New York, like they make it specifically for California. So you're going to get those, those emissions guarded right there.
Probably additional cost with it.
Oh, yeah.
Diesel or a gas.
Yeah.
So we're kind of making our some steps already. Yeah, we'll see. I mean, once the budget kind of settles and that gets decided, we can go from there. But we do have time to purchase, you know, our regular diesel buses.
Yeah.
We'll be fine for, for a couple of years and then, you know, we can plan that out, like we do with replacements of our buses every year. So hopefully it gets pushed off a little further.
Towards the tail end, like the ninth year or the 10th year so that all the prices have come down. We would hope, but then we would need too many vehicles at the same time.
I'm hoping there's a lot of flexibility. We'll see, we'll see where the legislation goes.
Do you know what's interesting on this? It doesn't have the stop arm.
The, oh, the, yeah, they, they don't really.
This is the.
The kids walk into them and they break.
The model.
Base model.
Yeah. We had, we had buses with the stop arm that would come out, sweep out, and the kids would walk into them or they, they walk by and they flip them and next thing you know, the motor's extended out too far. Driver has to get out and extend it out and push it back in because it won't go back in on its own. So that became more problematic than, than what it was worth. That's why we have our school bus. what it was worth. That's why we have our school bus training to, you know, cross 10 feet out in front and watch me when you cross. So they're, you know, better off having adults than having a machine anyway.
The kids are very well trained. You do a great job of training the kids to do that. I have to say, I've noticed as a parent just driving, you could see the kids make eye contact with the bus driver and wait and then go. It's great.
Yes.
The kids aren't the problem.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we purchase our diesel fuel monthly or on an annual contract?
Annual contract. It's a consortium with different, like I know we're part of with, uh, Central Valley Schools, they do this.
We purchase that on a fixed price or a floating price during the course of the year?
Uh, floating price. As, at, well, it's fixed, but as they increase, we're gonna increase.
Yeah, there's a, there's room for movement. Yeah, the fixed rate, but there's room for escalation based on what's going on. You're never gonna get a fixed rate for a, for a gas, maybe 10 years earlier. Yeah. I mean, if you have a bulk, a huge storage bank, yeah.
Well, I wanna ask that you all thank everyone in your departments for everything they've been doing, um, for two, for the past two years. I mean, really, the fact that everything is progressing at the rate that it is, all of these kids playing sports and, you know, Phil, you figuring out, you know, now the kids are six feet on a bus, now they're three feet on a bus, now they're mass, they're not mass, right? Everything that you had to do in between, the price of gas is going up. Now take a look at electric and, you know, Steve, all the relationships with the vendors and just the way our facilities look. Please extend our thanks to everybody in your departments. And thank you in particular for keeping this ship afloat so, in such a strong way.
Thank you.
Yes. Should we let them go to sleep? Cause they have to.
Yes.
Seven hours. Thank you so much. Oh, in this position?
No, it's not that long.
Has it been three years?
He's just been here since he was five.
But I think this is his first.
Oh, Phil, no, you presented once before.
Well, in person, maybe not in person.
Not in person? Thanks, John. Thank you very much, all of you.
John, thank you for coming.
Oh, great. Okay, awesome.
Have a good day.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
I'll be right back.
Yep. We can keep going. I'm ready. Scott said. We have a corner. We can get going.
Yeah.
So just as a quick review, the component budget is broken down into three categories, program, capital, administrative. Program essentially is everything instructional based, including your bus drivers, your age, psychology figures. So that makes up 72.3%. Capital being your maintenance and facility staff, utilities, security costs, everything Steve kinda got into there, insurance as well, that's 16% of the budget. And finally administrative, obviously everything supervisory, our APs, our principals, our directors, our chair people. So that includes, all those categories includes the salaries, the benefits, the supplies, equipment, which is for them. Okay. Just as a review. Uh, okay, in terms of the, the revenues, here's the breakdown by category. You know, Byron Hills, uh, in the Westchester area does not get a lot of state aid. We're at 4% state aid. So the majority of our revenue comes from our local taxpayers, uh, which is 81%, which is no change from last year. Um, then we receive pilot payments, our two pilot payments, IBM and Ingle Berman is about 3% of our revenue on an annual basis. Fund balance, appropriations, 3%, and other revenue as well. Um, you're, you're gonna see a lot of districts this year, and you're gonna hear a lot about how districts received a lot of foundation aid this year, um, some significant amounts. So you'll see a lot of districts with, with larger budgets. You'll see 4% budgets, 3.5% budgets. Some districts, some of your, your, your other districts like Mount Vernon, you might see a budget of 9%. And that's because they're getting all this additional state aid. This, the foundation aid, uh, you know, it's a recouping of foundation aid. So five or six years ago, when the state was in a huge deficit, um, they basically, they created this gap elimination adjustment, what do they call it? Basically they took state aid from all schools, used that to cover that hole in the state budget. And we're finally at this point, five, six years later, that they're making up that money that was owed. Now Byron Hills wasn't in the category where we, they were not giving us enough aid. Uh, we were actually in a category that was pretty much what we were supposed to get and maybe a little more. So it's been not taking aid away from us. Um, we're still getting a minimum 3% aid on a yearly basis, which for us is about $62,000. So we're gonna still get that on a yearly basis. But you're gonna see, you know, when all the budget information comes out in the papers, you're gonna see a lot of districts getting a lot more foundation aid, only because they have that, sort of recouping that. So you can go see that, that coming forward. But as a whole, uh, again, that increase of revenue of 1.78%. The tax levy form, and I won't bore you again, um, with the presentation, but this is just how it's calculated. My, my presentation in January gives a lot more detail. Uh, but again, we're, we're a total maximum allowable budget of 3.5%. This may change a little. Uh, the state hasn't completed their budget, uh, for, for this year. But once we get that information, that may change a little, but it won't be significantly over that 2.5%. Just as a quick review, our pilots, uh, again, our, our main pilots, Ingle Berman and IBM, uh, have, have decreasing values in the next two years. Um, that pilot is set to expire after next year for 2022, 23. And that, that discussion, I guess, is still ongoing with the town and the IDA for either a continual pilot, uh, for the next couple, three to four years, or if they come back on the tax roll. So once I find out that information, I will definitely talk to you guys further about that. Our debt service, just to break out, uh, we were able to refinance our bond, uh, last year. Uh, so we should see, you know, some savings, uh, over $300,000 for the remainder of this bond. After that 25, 26 school year, that'll be our last payment. So we'll, we'll no longer have that debt, similar to what we had in, in, uh, in 2021. In terms of the tax levy, this is a slide, on the left side is, is the dollar amount, right side is the percentage of the tax levy. Um, the, the red is the, uh, the actual tax levy, meaning what we proposed, uh, to our taxpayers. And the, the black line is what we could have, the maximum allowable tax levy. So just kind of a nice way to take a look at where we've been in the last couple, three, four years in terms of below the maximum allowable. Uh, this year, we're proposing a 1.84% increase in the tax levy, um, so 0.7 below the max. Uh, the prior year, the max was 2.6 and we were, we proposed a one, and we got a 1% for the last two years. But you can see the shifts based on the formula. You'll hear a lot about the tax levy and probably in the paper about 2% tax levy. You know, it's never been 2% for the district. Uh, in a lot of districts, you'll see that. You see it's been as high as a maximum of 4.59 and as low as a 0.43. And we've always been below that maximum since the inception of the formula, the 1213 school year. Okay, in terms of the revenues, uh, again, we're proposing a tax levy of 1.84% of increase of about $1.5 million. Uh, a decrease in the, the pilots based on IBM and Ingle Berman of $76,000 now. In the previous slide, you may have noticed it was around the, around a little higher than that. Um, so this is based on budget to budget. And so we did get a little more in terms of the pilot from Ingle Berman for this year. That's why that number you may see is a little different.
That's the one that's dropping off?
IBM. Yeah, Ingle Berman is consistent. That's always, it's based on a percentage. Um, IBM's the one that's dropping off for next year. Um, so that's a decrease in the pilot. Yeah, so it's agreement, it's pilot agreement. So they're probably negotiating it, as we speak. Um, so a decrease in the pilot of around 3%. Other revenues, a increase to $100,000. Uh, we've had significant increases in our county sales tax portions. Last year, in the pandemic year, we really, uh, reduced that number. Uh, we kind of anticipated an issue in terms of spending in the area and the county, uh, but it actually was, uh, we did get a lot more than we anticipated. You know, we, we budgeted a, a lower amount thinking spending would go down, and it actually increased significantly. Um, so based on that information over the last three years, I've had significantly over what I budgeted for revenue. So I felt comfortable raising that up $100,000, just in anticipation of that. Uh, and then state aid, uh, we have a decrease of 5.7%. It's not that we're reducing the amount of state aid we're receiving, you know, with our debt service payments and our projects, you know, we're still getting less aid on that, those payments. So that is decreasing not basically based on that. And we're not purchasing as much through buses. Last year, we purchased a lot, we all are great. That's why it was a lot higher last year. It's not that we're losing it, you know, it's just a decrease based on our strategy. And again, like other districts, we didn't, we didn't receive an increase in foundation aid like other districts. You saw a slide this from a lot of districts. On Mount Vernon, you're gonna see that increase significantly. Mount Vernon got about $10 million in foundation aid for next year. So just to be aware of that. And then finally fund balance, in order to balance the budget, an increase of $367,000, um, just to maintain and then, and get that full budget of $96.9 million. So, uh, below the maximum allowable, maximum allowable again being 2.54%, and, uh, we're proposing a 1.84% tax levy, uh, for next year. So I just wanna review fund balance. Uh, we do this every year, cause I just, I think it's important for you to understand it and be able to, to answer any questions you get from any public, um, taxpayers. So fund balance is, is always kind of confusing topic. Uh, there, cause there's three, really three areas of fund balance that you could talk about. Most people know the last topic restricted was, was your reserves. But, uh, there's an assigned fund balance, which is something, you know, that we can do on a yearly basis. And the budget's a planned fund balance. Unassigned, which is 4%, you can have as much as 4%, you know, saving, a good savings account is a way to think about it, just like a rainy day, kind of savings account. Uh, you can do that as a maximum 4% of your following budget. And then restricted reserve, which has a purpose and is approved by the board. So I wanna go into that and just let you know where we are in terms of those reserves. Uh, we currently have seven reserves. Uh, the first being a tax surcharge reserve. So, uh, if a, if a, a firm or a vendor in this area comfortably feels they're, they're over assessed, they can, they can reach out to and do a, a challenge to that, uh, with a, a legal challenge to that and see if they can get a reduction in assessments. Um, the districts already receive their taxes. So if they do get a reduction in their assessed value, how much they owe taxes, the district has to reimburse what they paid. That's why we utilize a tax surcharge reserve. So right now, we have about $5.6 million in that reserves. And that's based on actual cases of, that we have pending. Okay. Because if you didn't have that reserve, you'd have to reduce the budget to pay that amount.
And that's not a, a yearly thing. So a tax cert that's filed this year might not get settled in this year. So then you're carrying forward those monies.
Cause a lot of, a lot of companies will, will, will file every year and then they get to a year and they'll do four years. They'll go into, get a judgment for four years of a reduction or a change. So they'll wait until they have an included regulated amount.
But in the meantime, we're reserving a certain amount of money in the event.
In case we have to pay.
Right. Which changes every year. We work with each town assessor to, to get that number and where he thinks will be in terms of liabilities going forward. Our insurance reserve, uh, really just, uh, just to cover us in terms of the liabilities that are, that aren't covered by our insurance, uh, we have about $2.8 million in that reserve. Uh, property loss, uh, our, our transportation facility is on a flood plain. Um, and the district used to purchase insurance for this and the premium was significant. Um, and the maximum allowable, uh, if you had an incident, was $600,000 of coverage. So a couple of years ago, the district created this reserves, three years ago, the district created this reserves and eliminated that need to pay that premium insurance. So if something happened, we could cover it through that reserve.
And those premiums were getting steep.
Yeah. I think, I, I think it was about $35,000.
$35,000. But it was going up from like 22,000 to 35. So when we started seeing those heights, we said.
Who knows what it'd be at this point, based on everything going on.
God, I don't know.
So it was a very smart thing for the district to do. And we're just making, only, the only increases in this account would be the interest on a yearly basis, which, as you can see, over the last three years has not been much from $600,000. Uh, our retirement contribution reserves, this is really paired into two areas. Uh, so there's the employee retirement, uh, system, which is everybody that's basically not a teacher, that's a teacher's retirement system. So we have two reserves, one for the employer's retirement system, and then one for the teacher's retirement system. Now, if there was a significant increase in the retirement rate on a year basis, this is something we could, we could use to kind of alleviate that increase. If we had a large jump in terms of retirement for one year or two year basis, we could hit this reserve and just kind of mitigate that issue and hope that, that goes down or there's a flattening out of the rate. Uh, we haven't done that in the last couple of years, but with the retirement costs going up, and it might be something we could look into for 23, 24.
And the increase would be because we had a large number of retirees or because the rate goes up?
The rate. Right, right. And that would fluctuate based on.
So the teacher's retirement system, for example, would be looking at what they need to pay out retirements and so rates would go up.
If there's a recession.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, and there's a, it looks back with three year average or four year average? So it takes a while. So if the market dips 30%, 30% correction, then eventually the rates go up. It might take two or three years, but you start to get hit.
It's an actuary assumptions based on how they push it out. So it's, it's, it's a difficult process. I mean, that's.
Right, that's the other thing that can change. If people are living longer.
Our rates go up because we're contracted to pay out a certain, that doesn't change. Like they have to keep getting what they, what they're contracted to pay them.
And that's state wide, right?
State wide, it's controlled by the state.
Yeah, exactly. Right. So there's 1.3 million in that. Um, and then our employees benefit accrued liability reserves. So we do have some employees that still have, uh, based on old contracts, compensation for unused, uh, and unused, unused vacation and sick days. So this reserve is the full liability for that. So if that person retired, it'd be paid right out of that reserve. Okay. And that's, uh, 615,000. That changes on a yearly basis, based on, if you still have employees, they earn additional sick days. That means the increase that they leave, it gets paid out. Uh, in the unemployment reserve, uh, we have $215,000. Obviously, if we had any issues in terms of making reductions, we'd hit this reserve to cover that expenses and not have to pay out our general fund, um, going forward. Finally, our capital reserve, uh, we have $5.2 million in that. Uh, we have, uh, I think, five more years. Uh, it was established for 10 years and up to $10 million. Uh, we have five more years on that reserve, uh, to spend it. Doesn't mean disappears. Uh, if we get to that five years, we don't spend it, we don't make any, any new, uh, building projects or anything, we can, we can re-up that reserve. So it's not something you lose once you don't spend.
And it was 6.8 million or something at some point before we did the field, right? So we really only have 3 million more. Is it that you can keep 10 million in it at a time, or you can only fill it to 10 million?
Yes, right.
The latter.
Right, exactly. So you can, you can add up to it, so you get the 10.
So it's not like we can, we can put 4.8 million in there now. We can't.
We spend around 1.7 with the turn of tracks. So that was, that came out also.
So you can't go back up to 10.
No, no, no. Yeah, 10 total you can put into it, right.
Oh, so once it's down, we have to, we have to start a new fund?
So once it gets to the.
Once it hits 10 years, yeah.
We can, if we don't build a project, we can repay it. We can say, we're gonna do an additional 10 years for $10 million.
Do we have any anticipated big projects?
This?
Yep.
Oh, no.
Yeah, we talked about that a couple of years ago, the library kinda got pushed off. We're coming back to that.
Are we gonna try to do that? We said, no, not this summer, right?
Not this summer. We have to apply that. Our fields.
How long does, how long does term?
15, yeah.
15 years.
Yeah, I think we're good.
We have a long time.
Yeah, we're good with that. That's not a long one. But that process in terms of renovation, that's, that's a two-year process. So that's something we're really, and we're looking in there right now, being with architects in terms of, you know, we started that earlier, but now we're kind of ramping that back up. That's probably something we're looking in for next year, the year after, in terms of, of vote. Again, that has to be a referendum. To spend on the cap reserve has to be a vote referendum.
Love to hope that the building costs are back down.
If they're not, we're not doing anything.
Yeah, no, that's 100%.
Right, delays because they can't find supplies.
Yeah, yeah, right. So let's hope it just gets better. Be optimistic. Um, but in terms of the totals, it's, uh, $20.29 million in terms of the total. Um, and again, this is important for us in terms of whenever we borrow money, although we haven't recently, just to maintain our movies. Uh, this is one of the major factors movies look into is your reserves. And then where we maintain a triple A rating, which is, is pretty rare for school districts. So it's something very proud of. Um, and also when the comptroller comes in and reviews our finances and gives us a, a note designation for official stress is, is, is system, that's also something he's definitely looking into. Um, and given us a passing grade. It's always good. Okay, tax levy and apportionment of taxes. So it's important to know three factors when we start talking about your tax rate, um, and apportionment of the taxes. So the tax levy is 1% to the taxpayers in terms of, uh, you know, the actual, this is the total amount and your bills are associated based on that total amount.
Tim.
And then. Bad timing, just a. Assessments is, is something that's done by the town on an annual basis. Uh, we have four towns in this district. So the assessor does an assessment on the property, um, on an annual basis, basis to see if it's maintained. The important part of this is the equalization rate. So equalization rate is fairly hard to, to, to understand and to, to communicate. But essentially, um, it's the value, your assessed value and your market value is, is the equalization rate. That does make sense. So town of, the town of Greenburg did a full assessment, a reassessment of the whole town. So your market value and your assessed value were exactly the same. You paid your taxes based on your million dollar You paid your taxes based on your million dollar house and you could sell it for a million dollars. So that was 100% in terms of equalization rate. Now, the four towns in this district haven't done a reassessment probably ever. It's probably been 20, 30, 40 years. And it makes sense, it's expensive and there's a lot of issues associated with it. So what the state does is they create an equalization rate on a yearly basis. Okay? So if you look at North Castle, if you look at North Castle, 2.24% is the equalization rate. So let's assume you have a million dollar market value, you could sell it for a million dollars to me. Your assessed value would be 2.24%. So your assessed value on a million dollar home would be $22,400. Okay? And that's what your tax rate is calculated on. The state changes that equalization rate on a yearly basis. So the state is telling, is telling, based on what the assessors send up to the state, how much your market value of your home is on a yearly basis. And that's what the equalization rate does. Okay? So, and that's why you'll see rates, you know, town of North Castle will be around the $700 range. And you'll see, for example, if you see North Castle is at almost 20%. So again, that million dollar home, your assessed value is $193,800, right? Because it's 19.3% of your market value. So that's why you'll see North Castle have a $700 tax rate and Newcastle will be like $83, right? Because it's different percentages of your value of your home. Does that make sense?
Yes. So all they're doing, in layman's terms, is they are giving, applying different numbers to it, right?
Right.
They have their own different assessments.
Right, and the state is giving you a value of.
That equals.
It's important to understand, I don't know if I could.
It's like Econ 101. Jenny Kels.
I'm going to the board. But I think it's important, it's confusing, I know it's confusing.
Yeah, it's confusing to a taxpayer.
100%.
Who says, why am I living in Newcastle at 19.38% when I could be living in Mount Pleasant?
The important thing to know, it's not the value of your home, it's not, you know, it's based on how it's assessed and how it's taxed. So if you have the million dollar home, it'll be assessed value of $22,400 in North Castle. The Bedford will be $113,500, right? It's based on how the equalization rate, how much your market value home is based on assessed.
How do they determine total market value of a home?
What's that?
How do they determine total market value?
In the town?
Yeah.
Like in the town? They, based on that, basically they take every home, right? Reevaluate it based on the equalization rate and then add it all together. So it's a good segue.
Good segue.
So this is kind of the math, if you want to.
You asked.
I didn't set that up here. This is kind of the math, if you want to take a look at it later and just go up. But let's get to your question. So, so this is the full value of every home that's related, that comes to this school district and each of the four towns. You know, we do have people that live in the town of Bedford and the town of North Castle that come to this school district. So if you were to, if you wanted to buy the entire, every property that comes to Byram Mills, it'd be around $5 billion. That's the total full value, every home if you wanted to buy. Every home that comes to Byram Mills, it's about $5 million. So a little less than Yankees. And then that's how it's, that's how it's proportionate in terms of how taxes are levied. So 85% of our taxes go to the town of North Castle, which is the majority of our properties. But this is kind of on a yearly basis, these changes in total full value really affect how your tax rate gets apportioned to each town. So what does that mean? So, so if you remember the last couple of years. I actually go up there. There's been a, there's been a lot, a big shift in town of North Castle. You see, it's been a significant decrease since the 2018 school year. This year, it's been a huge jump, obviously. There's been some sales, I feel like a teacher. There's been some, some big sales and a lot of, the market's been really well in terms of town of Newcastle.
Sale on this side, the camera can see.
So yeah, there's been a big decrease. You see the huge jump into this year. It's higher than it was in 1819. So that shift in assessed value, that shift in the property of your value has jumped significantly. So the big apportionment of taxes is going to get pushed more towards the town of Newcastle. Just remember, this is $4.45 billion. One of our other properties, the biggest one we have over here is Mount Pleasant, around $740 million. So any shift down or up in terms of property value is going to have a significant shift in terms of the portion of the tax levy. And if you take a look at, so our two biggest, North Castle and Mount Pleasant, are smaller properties in terms of towns. Newcastle are 44 and Bedford are 40. You see, you know, they had the same kind of shift in 1819 where it dropped. Newcastle had a little bit of ups and downs and they had a big increase for this year. But again, only 44 properties. Similar inventory, kind of shift down and kind of worked it up. But these two properties, if you have two or three homes that sells significantly higher than their assessed value or market value, let's do that, or lower, that can really change that, that total.
So in other words, if I live in North Castle.
Yes.
And there is a slew of homes that sold for well under market value, right? They were.
What town?
In North Castle, right? Then the assessed value of the homes in that town for the sake of taxes is going to be lower.
But because of this crazy market, everything's going for well above, so assessed values are going up.
Yes. You could definitely see that in the town of North Castle, went up from 6.5%, which is a huge jump. I mean, you, you lost value from 1819, the values were lost. It got completely recouped and above a little more in terms of assessed value from that four years ago until the last year.
So is that, that's a combination of more houses being sold at higher.
Exactly.
100%.
So both more houses and private prices.
Absolutely. Which is pretty consistent. The only problem though, what you've seen in Mount Pleasant, if you look at 1819, go forward, you didn't see, you don't see the drop. You've seen it all. I mean, North Castle's greatest, they've sold the drop from 1819, it only got popped up.
Kelly, should we clarify that? It's not necessarily that it's more houses for a higher price, but it's that.
Total drop.
The total value is higher.
Why did Bedford go down?
What's that?
Why does Bedford go down?
They don't have a lot of homes there.
You're talking about 40 properties and some of these properties may be just vacant land, it's potentially vacant land. So you probably had one or two sales that were below.
Like the 14 acres.
Yeah, because I know there's like no inventory.
Yeah. You're talking about, you know, 18 to 20 million dollars in terms of full value. That sounds like a lot, but when you compare that to, you know, $4.45 billion, it's not a lot of change. And that, and again, a change in the house can really significantly jump, like, you know, you, there probably were increases here in these two years. You know, usually you'll see a decrease and you see that in North Castle. You know, there probably were some sales here that were maybe potentially over market value and made that shift right there.
There's like that little piece of Thornwood area that's part of, that's counted in Mount Pleasant, right?
Yep, yep. Mount Pleasant is, has been pretty consistent. They, you know, they've been fairly flat in terms of assessed values for the last four years. And, you know, they got the increase this year kind of based on everybody else. But that's why you, Mount Pleasant is pretty, pretty standard. So if you have a significant shift, like we had a big decrease in these last three years, that, that tax apportionment has kind of shifted from North Castle to Mount Pleasant to some certain areas based on that change. And that's how the changes in assessed value is gonna, that change in assessed value can significantly change the apportionment of the tax rate.
And this is not for all of Pleasant, Mount Pleasant or all of Bedford, it's just for the Byram Hills.
Bingo.
Exactly.
It's just those 40 properties and these 44.
Mia, Upnanny, Hagan, Make-A-Rite on Palmer and that's all in there.
That's right. Any questions? I thought I.
Kelly, that was so good. Really clear.
Yeah, I thought I didn't get it that little more. Having said that, so the town of North Castle, a tax rate increase of 2%. You see the decrease in Newcastle and Bedford and a 0.4% increase in Mount Pleasant, again, based on those shifts in assessed value. If we take a look at historically, you can see it how it really can shift. You look back at Bedford in 15, 16 school year, you see a 12.18% increase. So that year, there probably was a large.
I'm so glad I wasn't the superintendent.
That was a long time ago. It was probably a large shift in terms of that. But you can see how it can significantly shift on a yearly basis based on those changes in assessed value. This year, it's really been reductions, the reduction in North Castle and then, you know, basically a flat to a little increase in Mount Pleasant has shifted the tax rate more towards the North Castle, which is again, the majority of our property. But if you look at the last couple, three years, you've seen property increases, tax increases that have been, you know, below that 1%, 1.49. And again, if you look at the bottom row here, that's, that's what the tax levy rates are. So, you know, the tax levy increase is the 1.84, but in terms of proportion for your taxes, that'll, that's an increase of 2% when you're actually seeing your taxes on your basis. And if you're talking about your, your median home of about $80,000 market value, that's about $270, $260, $270 increase, that 2%. Okay? And then Mount Pleasant in the same market value of that, Andrew, that's about a $54, $56 decrease on a yearly basis. Any questions on that?
No. Kelly's so good. Sweating nice work.
And then this is, this is Iris' slide, he's not here, but he'd kill me if I didn't do it.
We'll tell him.
This, this has been a great comparison. Unfortunately, districts, unfortunately, districts have kind of stopped submitting their data. If you remember last year, I believe eight or nine districts didn't submit their data. Basically, what this is, is you pick up your, you pick up your, your house and you put it in, you put all houses in another district in one place and it's the value of your paying for your taxes. Okay? And we've always been on the lower side, which is a good thing in terms of value. Unfortunately, 24 districts didn't submit data this year. So it's not a great comparison. We're kind of in the same range as we've been in the past in terms of the bottom, which again, is a good thing.
There are enough there that it still is a good representative.
So, yeah, we're 25th, so 24 districts have a higher true tax rate, only five have a lower. So here's a kind of a graph. It usually looks a lot better because there's a lot more districts, but we're still basically in that bottom area, which is a good thing of where you want to be in terms of true tax.
I can't read what, which, what are the districts that are lower? I'm just curious.
Rye, Harrison, Maranet, Katona, Cannibal Hills.
They don't even have taxes. They still have Rockefeller taxes over there.
They have the state there.
Okay.
And Iris Schulman is also on the back of Spectrum, which is going to be going out to all of our members of our community. They did a story about certain time. I mailed them a few copies too.
So just a review, so our tax levy increased to 1.84%, about $640,000 below our maximum level tax levy. And then budget to budget, 1.78%. And again, the total budget, 96, 939, 312. And then in terms of our calendar, we still have.
We still have a couple more left. We still have budget hearing four on April 5th, although tonight was the last night for public comment. The next budget hearing four is on April 5th for final proposed budget. April 19th will be the budget adoption. May 3rd will be budget hearing five, which will review the proposed budget. And May 17th will be the budget vote. Ed, you should put it in, middle school from 6:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Any questions? Well, Kelly.
That's right, any questions? The presentation will be on the website. If anybody wants me to go through tax rate and tax levy, I can definitely do that. Send me an email and I'll get back to you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are you getting a lot of questions?
No.
No. I have got questions at the best.
Yeah.
Have you done your principal's conference yet?
We're set to do them end of April.
Could be some questions after that too.
Yeah, definitely.
Yep.
All right, so we're only going to staff reports.
Thanks, Ted. I have a battery shop like five minutes. All right, so just quickly, I wonder how much longer we're going to be doing the COVID update? But we have had.
Down to four.
I know, it is great. So total positive cases are four. And this is from 228 to 321, we have 20.
So our little spike was contained.
Spike was contained.
What's our sense of just rapid tests and people calling in? Is there any other activity you didn't know?
Not after that, no. They're not getting it.
Okay.
That's great.
That's in the high school and the middle school where kids can't be vaccinated.
Right, right. Yep, so good numbers there, happy to say. And I was, we saw that same thing replicated in other districts where they had like a little burst of COVID cases and then nothing that remained after that. So we were hopeful and good, we're grateful it did happen. Oh my gosh, checkmate. We have such an exciting Byram Hills students who played in the New York State Scholastic Chess Tournament in Zaratoga Springs. Coach Felix Lopez, it was the first in-person major chess tournament for the students in over two years. They did some amazing work. Look, our Comen Hill team competed in the K3. They were rated under 800 section. Wyatt, Ethan, Vincent and Ryan and Wyatt took first place for previously unrated players.
Awesome.
That's great.
Okay, and the Wappas team played in the K5 rated under 1,000 section and came in fifth place. Nicholas, Miles, Gary, Nate and Keshav. And Nicholas had second place for players rated under 800 in this section. We've got the chess fever. HCC team competed in the under 1,200 section, came in fourth place. Nate, Alice, Peter and Charlie. And Nate came in fifth place undefeated with three wins and three draws. That must have been like intense. Alice came in second place for players rated under 600. And on March 19th and 20th, 39 of our Byram Hills High School Science Research students participated in the WSF. We are proud to announce 36 of them won awards. Congratulations to all of our students. And thank you to Edith Bachmann, who invited Tim and I to come to the dinner Thursday night, which is so nice. I'm really looking forward to that. I'm a big fan of Edith. Three of our students won the grand prize and will be representing Byram in International Science and Engineering Fair this May in Atlanta. And that is Edith, there she is on the left, Jack and Gabriella. Congrats to you. We're so proud of them. Love those sweatshirts. And, I mean, this is almost like the Oscars where the other, this is like me at the Oscars. Okay, I can't possibly say it all, but I do want to have an opportunity to show these awards. These 36 pretty amazing awards. This is the second page.
Are these through science research?
Yes. Yes. And here. Yep, they're in the packet. And here.
Wow.
Congratulations.
And here.
These are the 36?
Best in category. These are the 36.
Wow.
Yeah. I mean, can you believe it? And here.
It's a lot of awards.
I love just seeing the names. Nora Lowe, people, Sydney's in there, everybody who's just done an amazing, Gabriella. And the grand prizes were Jena on International Science and Engineering Fair. Awarded the top 20 overall scoring projects, Edith, Jack, and Gabriella. So amazing. And thank you to our teachers in that program as well. We are proud to announce 34 students inducted into the National Art Honor Society on Thursday. I went, it was great. They recognize high school students who demonstrate outstanding artistic and academic strength, commitment of service through the arts. So in addition to the inspirational speeches, Catherine Eshu, our English teacher at the high school, who is in the Perspectives in Literature class, was honored as a faculty inductee. Just fantastic. And what I loved is they showed like my art journey, right? There were two students who showed us their art journey and the type of art that they do and why they do that kind of art, and what inspires them to do it. It was really an amazing event, so.
Can I ask you a question about that? So when Mr. Poetz was here last week, he was talking about the honor society. And I thought he said that we weren't participating, we were doing our own national, our own honor society and not doing the national honor society? No? No? I misunderstood?
Maybe it was
I think he was talking about the Art Honor Society, but it's the first time we did it?
Yeah.
No, we're talking about
This is our first.
Nisma, having Nisma here for the first time.
This is our first.
Okay.
We'll play back last week's and
Go back to the video.
We'll take a look. Yep. So congratulations to all of these students who received awards. I know it. I know it. They had so many. And just really amazing facilitation.
It's so nice to see these names on multiple different lessons, you know, science and art.
It was incredible. And there they all are. And I have to say Catherine Eshu gave a speech, and it's not, you know, all right, I just have to say it. I listened to her speech and I thought, I want to emulate some of the things in her speech. Like some of the way, she was just such a fantastic speaker, and it brought me back to the reason why kids thrive in our classes, because the time and the care and the, just, it wasn't just the presentation of what she was saying, it was how she was saying it. That was so incredibly special.
Lori and I got to see her in action last week at the high school tour, and she was wonderful. That class was
The kids are excited in their class.
Catherine is a star. She is amazing.
She is fantastic.
Yep.
Let me mention, she also facilitates a student leadership order. That's right.
And I would be really remiss if I did not mention Jane Carlin and Amy Minashe, who are spearheading that National Art Honor Society and who inspire these kids every day and the opportunities that they're giving them. And, you know, the new courses that they have been developing over the years are just something that I think that I would prefer to be a kid than the superintendent in the school. And maybe I would like to take some of those courses that were wholly not available when I was a kid. Metal smithing, and the other night, we were talking about the prices of silver and why kids aren't using silver, why they're using, you know, other metals. And they just put so much time and thought into it. And I know that they are artists in their own right, and, you know, they encourage other members in the art department to go with them. They visit the Catona Museum of Art, where a lot of our kids' art has been displayed. And, I mean, they're just true artists, which is pretty amazing. Yep. And that's it. Tim?
So tonight Gina and I have a brief staff report. So doing it together with Gina, this is fun. We wanted to give you an update on the social emotional learning curriculum. You've heard us write about it, I've written about it since last year, talking about a pilot program. So we just want to give an update and an overview of what we've been up to. So first of all, let me just review for our board and for our community sort of what social emotional learning is, why it's important. And it really has to do with the way, you know, we talk to students and give students opportunities to do things like regulate their emotions, the way they interact with each other, focusing on setting goals and how they obtain those goals. So there's a lot that goes into social emotional learning. We've always prided ourselves on addressing that with our students across the district. We've been working on developing a framework, and we'll talk about that. A story of seeing it in action, I'll say, from even my interaction today. I was visiting Coman Hill and went into one of my usual classes that I visit in first grade. And I walked in and the teacher had what we call centers. There are students working in various groups, and the teacher was working with a small group. And I walk in and I see a couple of boys look at me, and one boy runs over to me and says, I want to show you something. And he pulls a Rubik's Cube out of his desk, and he shows me that he can do one side of it. Hands it to me and says, can you do it? I haven't done a Rubik's Cube in about 45 years, so I don't remember it. So I pretend I'm trying to figure it out. Another boy comes over and says, oh, I know how to do it. So I hand the Rubik's Cube to this boy. Little did I know, the teacher's over there like watching me, debating whether she should come interrupt. So then, the boy said, the original boy says, you're not supposed to take that, remember? And the boy looked at him and handed it back and said, I'm sorry. And then the other boy said, thank you, and went and put it back in his desk. I didn't think much of it, I went to another group, whatever. Later, I ran into that teacher, and she tells me, this has been a big ordeal with this boy who recently discovered the Rubik's Cube and has been playing with it all the time in his classroom. Little did I know, I come in and totally disrupt her routine where she's been teaching him how to keep that in his desk and can only take it out at certain times. So she told me I was debating the whole time whether I should come over when he took it out of his desk at the wrong time to show me. But she was debating while he's excited because I'm in the room, and they always like to show off what they're doing when I come in. But that's an example of the teacher working very explicitly with children on how they manage and regulate their behaviors and their emotions and the way those two boys interacted, where the boy just said politely, he didn't like grab it or yell and say, you've got my Rubik's Cube. He just said, you're not supposed to take that, you know, use my Rubik's Cube. It must have been a thing between them. So that's an example of being very explicit about our goals and what our, the behaviors we expect from students in the classroom. And that's just a small example that I just happened to witness today.
I'm sure my sons would have never had that verbal exchange.
Oh, no, no.
And they were great, right?
I used to have all sorts of things.
Remember, you're not supposed to take one.
No, it would have been, give that to me. The teacher would have come over and taken it away. How many things have we had taken away from us?
Some tough studies in there.
So this is the type of environment we try to instill in our classrooms, where it's a strong classroom culture of care and kindness. And it's also a way to keep students focused on the academics. You know, these students were working until I came in and disrupted them from their lesson for a moment. But it is a way that kids can access and attend to the goals that they set for themselves academically. So that's part of why social emotional learning is really important. The research supports it as well. There's lots of research on evaluating social emotional learning programs. And I came across a recent meta-analysis with lots, dozens of studies, which had over a quarter of a million people, talking about the following effects with seeing pro-social behaviors going up and antisocial behaviors going down. And always a surprising finding in this research is the academic achievement going up. There's theories about that, when kids are more focused and get along with the classroom, they're going to be more focused on the learning. And thus, learning is impacted as well. So that's sort of the theory. Another study from, it's about a decade old, looking at increase in academic performance, stronger positive relationships with peers, reduced misbehavior and less anxiety, has an impact of social emotional learning programs. The elements of those programs that they evaluate contain these five things. There's social awareness, self-awareness, self-management, relationship skills, and decision-making. Those are the elements of social emotional learning. Each of those having indicators underneath them. So this sort of gives you an overview of what social emotional learning is to us and why it's important.
So just in terms of the timeline, I'm not sure where I should, in terms of the timeline, when we began in 2018, Tim through Site Based Team was able to facilitate some work surrounding various social emotional frameworks and really came upon the castle one that he just spoke about, the circle that includes those five elements. At the start of 2020 and through the 2020, 2021 school year, Dave Mack certainly spearheaded a lot of the facilitation in terms of meeting with various companies to understand and learn more about their curriculum, as well as the other assistant principal, Janie Marie DeFalco at Coman Hill. Both of our psychologists at the elementary level, Jamie Carp and Yvette Thompson, as well as Bernice Pergon, who is a student assistant counselor at Coman Hill. And through that study, we really all felt very strongly about trying out Character Strong, which is the social emotional curriculum. And also simultaneously, what was happening was we knew we were anticipating hiring a new school counselor that would be really responsible for facilitating this curriculum within the general education classroom. So Annie Schmidt, Annie Schmidt, she began working with our grade three students during the encore cycle. And she also pushes them to grade four and five, as well as their community meetings. So looking ahead to next year, we're hoping to expand Character Strong and having Bernice Pergon work on it both at Coman Hill in grades one and two, as well as looking at how we can improve or refine aspects of the grade three curriculum that was facilitated during encore, and also look for more opportunities to push into grades four and five.
We convened that group because we've always had character education in our classrooms, and teachers would interpret that in different ways. And we felt the need for some continuity kindergarten through fifth grade, just like we would in a literacy or math curriculum. We said, maybe we should need a program that we can implement consistently. But we didn't want to be too rigid, so we'll get to the details of the program in a moment.
Does Annie just work at Wampus? Doesn't she correct your Coman Hill tip?
Wampus.
Just Wampus. So you remember from our goals documents over the years, Coman Hill and Wampus have often focused on nurturing and supporting a school community of confident and independent learners. So we believe social emotional learning helps achieve those goals.
So just looking at Character Strong again, there was a few reasons why it was more attractive to us in terms of adopting and piloting it. But it really is focusing on looking at the whole child. The lessons are vertically aligned, and you're teaching social emotional learning while simultaneously focusing on character traits. So this is an example of the 10 character traits that they've identified. I'm not going to read that to you, but certainly you could see, once I come to mind, I'm thinking of what Annie has done so far in terms of empathy and cooperation, honesty, and kindness. And, you know, they're very easy to implement and to move in and out of based on perhaps situations that might emerge during, you know, about during the day. I'll just look at gratitude. You'll see that each of the character traits have five sections within each of the grade levels. So there's a band like grade three to five. You'll see that there's five different sections, and there's a lot of flexibility in terms of how you implement them. Within each, there's a myriad of resources, both for the classroom teacher, for the school counselor, for parents, and all of which are aligned to, again, that castle framework that we talked about initially and in line with the American School Counselor Association framework.
I like that this program wasn't prescriptive. It didn't, you know, some characterized programs just sort of tell you exactly what to do. It's almost like a script, and you do it in a linear fashion. This one is, you could do it any order, you could do it as you need it. And what we're finding, what Annie does, she'll talk to the classroom teachers and survey them on what they think is important for the students. They can adapt it based on things that might come up in the year that a classroom needs to work on. So she can adapt it and pull lessons and resources in any order she feels is relevant to meet the needs of the students. And we really liked that flexibility in this particular program. It wasn't so linear and prescribed. So that we found valuable, and it has lots of resources. So there's much more to do than you ever could do in a school year. So it has lots of resources. And I'll just give a quick example of something Annie did with our students in third grade, which was looking at literature through this book, this children's book called The Empty Pot, which is a great story about the emperor looking for his successor amongst students. And it's a story about integrity and honesty. So the students read the story, they talk about what it means, and then there's always an activity, a hands-on activity, where students had to make their own flower pot, because it was based on the theme of the story around characteristics and attributes, how they could be honest and have integrity. So there's some things written on there, like being a good sport, apologizing, sharing, and some of the things each student creates, their own flower pot is a reminder of the theme in the story of honesty and integrity. So that's a way of tying it to literature as well, which we always like to bring in, you know, the skills that students need to think about as well, is develop their character. So that was one example. I want to thank Annie for sharing this with me and showing me the book and talking to me about the activity. So we are going to continue the pilot next year. We're not ready to make a decision on it this year. As I know, we want to bring it over to Coman Hill, see how first and second grade students respond to it. And we're anticipating next year coming back to you for approval if we decide to adopt this. We're thinking we will, but we want to give it a little more time and a closer look.
Are the teachers giving you any sort of feedback about how they're feeling it's going in their classroom with their students and which grades might be benefiting more than others? Are you doing it with just third right now, you said?
A pull-out model in third grade during the encore, but then pushing into fourth and third.
So I'm just curious about how that, how it sort of compares with the different
Yeah. Feedback so far is really good. So Annie's been able to be flexible, and so when she's pushing into fourth and fifth grade, she talks to teachers based on their needs. She'll go into the lesson. And I've heard only good things about it so far. Dave will meet with us at the end of the year, give us some official feedback from the teachers on that. And that will be part of our evaluation going forward.
It really is a critical time and in a critical building, right? Because prior to COVID, we saw a lot of Wampus meltdowns or kids who were just not emotionally ready to learn, right? Then COVID happened, and we separated kids six feet apart. And you have a lot less issues when the kids are separated by six feet, right?
But they're not actually learning how to deal.
They're not learning how to deal, right? So then, you know, you bring them three feet apart, and now you bring them closer together. And having something that's an actual curriculum, we knew we needed even prior to COVID. But for them to start hearing that now, as they're starting to all come back together in this moment in time, I can't say close COVID, whatever, this moment in time.
It's fantastic.
It's really necessary, right?
Yeah. So as teachers are starting to put students back together in groups and pushing their desks together, I talked to a classroom teacher today at Coman Hill, and I saw her class. And I said, your classroom looks different from the last time I was here. What happened? And they were talking about it. And the teacher said, oh, it was an adjustment, wasn't it, to the students? Sometimes they felt like there was a lot of students around me right now, and they had to learn how to interact, especially when they're facing each other. We push those desks in little, you know, quadrants and
The personal space changes.
Yeah. Personal space.
First graders haven't been like that since kindergarten. They don't even remember that.
Well, these first graders haven't, they really haven't been like that.
Haven't, right?
So it's a real adjustment. She said they were really excited, but they were a little like scared because this is new. So the teacher had to sort of really address that as the class and talk about how we're going to behave.
And they're still not as close as they used to be before COVID.
No.
They're still separated.
Exactly. Right. Right. So all these things are really important to focus on this and be explicit in teaching students about these things. So I'm pretty confident we're going to be caught up in terms of our students' sort of interaction and emotional sense by the end of this year and into next year. The teachers are working really hard with their kids.
That's great. Wait to think of what Sammy wants to say.
So
Take a picture.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, Kelly?
Kelly got A+ today.
What are you doing again?
I like how Kelly even got up.
You're showing me over and over.
It's the moment he's been waiting for. He's married to a teacher.
Love to replay that for her.
Anybody have any board reports? Communication you only want to mention from my end is BOCES. They've given us some information on the budget, which we will have to vote for on April 19th.